Okay, Sean, are we ready to go?
Yes, yes, we are. I started the recording.
Okay, all right. Welcome to the Design Review Commission Meeting Wednesday, January 19, 2022. First order of business is we will establish the quorum. I will call the roll, so answer here when I call your name, please. Michael Ma.
You're muted, Michael.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi, Michael. Sam Harding.
Present.
Thank you, David Blockus.
Here.
Thank you, Jude Carrick.
Here.
Thank you, Frank Bishop, here. So we have the full commission tonight. We've established the quorum. Before I get on to the next item, Sean, did you have someone that you wanted to introduce to the commission?
I do not see our community development director here tonight. Laura, are you here tonight? Yeah, maybe. No, she's not. Sorry, but maybe maybe later she'll join the meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe if you see her appear, then we'll get her introduced. Okay, so next item is public comments on items not on the agenda. Do we have any public comments here, Sean? Not on the agenda.
I have not received any public comments on the agenda unless there are any members of the public who would like to speak about an item not on the agenda tonight.
All right, hearing none, I'll close this section of the meeting. Okay. Next items for consideration and action. First item is we have a special item, which is the election of the chair and the vice chair. So I have a little memo here from Sean. And we're going to nominate and elect the chair and vice chair to serve from tonight onward until October 20th, October 2022. So it'll be not a full term, but it will fill the rest of the time of this year. And then in October, we'll have a we'll have another election. All right, so I will govern this. First, we will have the election of the
To the chair, if I could, to the chair, if I could provide some clarifications for you, a short report, if possible.
I was working from your report, but please, yeah.
Yes, so um, so the so if the commission's aware, what staff is proposed is the election of the chair and vice chair. Staff in reviewing the elections of both the DRC Historical and Planning Commission learned that they were out of sync. The the commission should be aligned to end at the first meeting in October with the new chair starting the first meeting in October. The important thing to realize is that chairmanships can extend multiple years. So if the commission would like to reappoint any of the existing chairs and vice chairs today, they can. There is not a limit or time constraint on the number of years a commissioner or vice or vice chair or chair can be hold the chairmanship position. So that's the the basic reasoning why we're holding it. This will run from this meeting until the first meeting in October and then the first meeting in October after the new commissioners are seated in September. The new commissioners will be able to vote on a new chairperson starting the first meeting in October. And hopefully that clarifies it. Thank you very much for allowing me to provide a short report. Thank you.
Okay, Sean, yep, thank you very much. Okay, so at this point, we're going to have two elections. First, the chair. So I will ask excuse me?
Hello?
Someone just a telephone number at the bottom. I don't know who it is.
Hello?
Hello, Sean, do you want to take this?
Question, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, we we got a we got a notification about the project review meeting and the project location is 610 Teresa Lane, starting at 7:00 p.m. today.
So if you
Is this a live meeting?
Yeah, no, it'll be tonight. If you stay on the call, I believe it'll be the the last item of the evening. Okay? So if you just mute yourself until we get to that item.
Oh, okay, just stay here, then. Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay. So at this point, we'll have the election of the chair and the vice chair. We'll do them separately. So first, I will ask for nominations for the chair.
I nominate David.
I second it.
There's no second needed. I guess we just will take a vote. Then are there any other nominations? Hearing none, then we'll take the vote for David as chair. So, Michael?
Hi.
Thank you, Sam?
Hi.
David?
Say hi.
Hi.
Thank, thank you. Jude?
Hi.
Frank says hi. Okay, congratulations, David, you're the chair. Next, we'll, I think I complete this part two. Next, we'll have nomination for the vice chair. Would someone like to make a nomination for the vice chair, please?
I nominate Michael.
Okay, all right, thank you. Michael Ma. So let's take a vote on Michael for the vice vice chair. Michael?
Hi.
Thank you, Sam?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Thank you, Jude?
Hi.
Thank you, Frank is an eye as well. Okay, congratulations, Michael. Okay, at this point now, we've got both of these done. We will turn the gavel over to to David. You will be presiding over the rest of the meeting.
Okay, I'd like to thank all the voters in today's elections. They were awesome. Okay, so we go on to item number two, Design Review Commissions Meeting Minutes from January 5. Do I have a motion on that or any questions on that?
Yeah, before we move on, I just want to let everybody know. If you're not a speaker, if you can turn off your video and mute yourself, we'll try to manage it a little bit, but it's helpful just to see the commissioners and the speakers on on the screen at the time that they're speaking. That'd be appreciated. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions about the prior minutes or do we have a motion?
So moved.
So Sam, Sam, is that a motion to accept the minutes?
A move, motion to accept.
Do we have a second?
Taken.
All those in favor, let's take a vote. Commissioner Bishop?
Hi.
Commissioner Harding?
Hi.
Commissioner Kirk?
Hi.
Commissioner Ma?
Hi.
And Commissioner Blockus, I as well. So minutes have passed. So now we'll go to the public hearing. We have item V 21-0004 and SC 21-0020 at 800 South El Monte. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Blockus and Commissioners. The project for tonight is a variance to exceed the maximum floor for the R1H zoning district and design review for a two-story addition to an existing two-story house. The project includes a variance to exceed the maximum floor for the R1H district by 1,600 square feet, which would preserve a legal not conforming barn at the subject site. As many of the commissioners are aware, El Monte Avenue is a busy arterial road with a wide right of way and landscape median. The project is located on the east side of El Monte Avenue between University Avenue and Summer Hill Avenue. The houses
Hey, Sean, I'm turning around. I think you're you're sharing your meeting notes.
Oh, sorry.
Maybe the slides will be bigger on the screen for everybody. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I thought I chose the right one.
Yeah, no worries. Just
Well, that isn't that doesn't help everybody. Sorry, I know how I work.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you. So the houses on El Monte on the east side of the roadway are considered diverse character. This is the east side of El Monte. They vary in one-story, two-story, varying setbacks and architectural styles. The houses are not typically as prominent on this side of the of the site across El Monte on the west side. It's more consistent character with a mix of one and one-story and two-story lower-scale ranch-style homes with lower pitch and gable and hip roof forms. This provides a context. This is 730 South El Monte on the on the left side and then 860 El Monte and then 780 El Monte. This is provided in the plans in the middle. The existing house is considered to be not conforming to the second-story setbacks along this right side. The existing setback is 16.2 feet where 17 and a half feet is required at the second story. No proposed modifications are
That's why you can do a three-story.
I'm I'm sorry if I could interrupt. Could the person at 7149388 mute themselves?
And Sean, if you want to make me co-host, I can help you manage the meeting while you're talking.
Yeah, let me see. I wouldn't say I'm best at this. Well, let me continue and I'll do it right after. So it is a legal not conforming structure. The applicant is not proposing to modify the not conforming portion of the structure. It's not proposing to modify more than 50%. Under the zoning code, as the commissioners are aware, not conforming structures are allowed to remain as long as they're not modifying more than 50% of the structural components of the building. That includes the structural outer walls, foundation, or roof. The existing barn, which is located directly here in the front of the house, is is an is a barn that is approximately 1 foot 8 inches and setback from the front property lines. As the commissioners are aware, accessory structures are not permitted in front yards. Therefore, the barn is not conforming due to not meeting the minimum front setback of 30 feet. The owners currently have no plans to demolish demolish the barn and they would like to retain the barn. While the house is over 50 years old, it does not have attributes or significance to a historic structure and is not currently on the HRI. However, staff did find that the barn, which was constructed in a period between 1875 to 1948, may potentially be a part of a stagecoach line that operated on Moody Road in the early 1900s. The architecture of the barn is very similar to the JP Hale Ranch from the 1880s and 1890s. From staff's perspective, with input from the history museum and other parties, we do believe that the barn may have attributes and may be significant and potentially a historic structure, even though it's not on the historic inventory. In the original plans in the middle, and this is an example, this is a barn today, in the original plans in the middle, the applicant did propose to demolish the barn. And part of that was proposal was to demolish the barn and add that square footage to the main house, which would allow the addition to the main house to fall within the standard floor area lot coverage standards for the site. Staff advised the applicant that they had two options in regards to the barn. One, they could pursue historic resource evaluation to determine whether the barn was truly historic. If it found was found not to be historic, then they could demolish the barn. If it was found historic, then they would have to go through California Environmental Quality Act, you know, environmental impact report in regards to demolishing a historic barn. As an alternative, staff recommended that the applicant consider applying for a variance to retain the potentially historic and dilapidated barn while pursuing the addition to the main house. Sorry. The applicant, you know, is seeking a variance to allow for the two-story 1,088 square foot addition. The total floor area for the house with the two-story addition would be 4,215 square feet, where the maximum for the R1H district is 4,215.9 square feet. So so that the house without the barn would qualify, however, because they are proposing to retain the potentially historic barn that 1,600 square feet, they are requesting to exceed the maximum allowed floor area by an additional 1,600 square feet. The applicant does provide a justification letter as attachment B in the staff report. The variance findings are conveyed in the staff report. You know, staff did convey the particular perspectives why we do believe it meets it. Under variance finding one, we do believe that the site will continue to be harmonious and convenient to the relationship of adjacent residential residential properties that have existed at the site and in this location previous to 1948, when the barn was constructed. It will add no additional impediments and the new house will meet the required development standards for the R1H and R110 district standards. In regard to whether granting of the variance will be detrimental to the health and safety of welfare or persons living or working in the vicinity, the proposed addition will comply with the development standards for the R1H district, the retention of the existing barn floor area and encroachment into the yard areas would not further impact the relationship of the structure to surrounding properties and or persons living in houses surrounding this site and would permit the retention of a potential historic resource. Due in regards to finding number three, this staff does believe the strict application of the code would deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by other properties with the identical zoning classifications, which permit the main house to have a floor area of 4,215.9 square feet. And the approval of the variance will not grant a special privilege in comparison to other properties due to the site being constrained with a potentially historic barn, which creates a unique circumstance for the particular property. The project does propose a addition for a new garage at the lower level of 487.5 square feet. It does propose a 552 square foot garage at a middle level or first floor, and it does propose a 48 square foot addition at the second story. The applicant is available and will explain those additions. The plans do convey that this is a multi-level house. So there are multiple first stories and there are multiple second stories on this house due to the due to the slope of the house or the slope of the property. The house's overall architecture is changing from a more eclectic traditional design to a more contemporary inspired architectural design. It's maintaining its asymmetrical and gable roof forms. The it's including the the low-slope roof and large frame windows and kind of unormental decorative detailing. It does propose a recessed porch at the front and a large covered porch in the back of the house. It is adding standing seam metal roof and horizontal vertical stained siding to the structure, stone veneer and wood-clad aluminum windows that staff does believe reflects a high level of quality and is more rustic in relation to the surrounding properties. The proposed project is sensitive to the scale of houses found in the neighborhood. The project is proposing an eight-foot-tall first-story plate height and second-story plate heights of eight feet. The overall height is at 23.7 feet. Staff does know that we did provide an attachment H, which replaces sheet A 3.2. And that is reflecting the removal of the windows on the right side elevation. Previously, in the plans that you have, they did propose the addition of new windows and those are now deleted from the project. The landscape plan does include a variety of new vegetation and ground cover in addition to preserving many of the existing trees on the site. And the staff does believe it meets the intent of the city's landscape regulations and tree guidelines. This provides, this is within your packet on sheet AR1, and this provides a photo simulated drawing of the front elevation of the house. And then also from more at a pedestrian level down along El Monte Avenue. And staff does recommend approval of the project. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Do we have any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jude.
Well, David, I think you and I might have seen a project back in the day on 10 Yerba Buena Avenue. Sean, I think you might have been involved in it. It was another historic property where I think they were also granted a variance for an addition based upon preserving a water tower.
Oh, yeah.
For that?
Correct, yes. 10 Yerba Buena was another project where they had a they were looking at subdividing a property and then I believe if I am mentioning the correct one, no, maybe not. This 10 Yerba Buena is one where they had a water tower on the site and then they relocated it in order in order to relocate it and modify the location of the house and to pursue variance. We've had multiple historic properties pursue this.
Right, so it's so I guess my question is, is we've seen this kind of situation request before handled by a variance, so not that we take anything as a precedent, but this would not be uncommon in other areas of Los Altos, correct?
Correct. It's I think the only difference is this is not those structures were deemed historic and they were on the registry. This is not. However, it is one of the few examples of a barn that exists in the city. We have very few left in the community. And it is it is one of the few of this style in our city. There are others in other locations in the county, but not in Los Altos.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Sean, I have a question. So this barn, since it's going to be preserved, what's I'm just kind of curious, what's the future use allow or disallow by the city? Or can they convert to a living unit? Or what was what do you see, you know, or prefer from the city or what's, you know, I just want to see what's our option for the future owner or the owners to use?
So any type of improvement to the, any type of improvement to the barn would require you know, any type of modification, the barn one would trigger a requirement for them to do a historic resource evaluation. Historic resource evaluation would then determine whether the barn itself is historic. If the barn is historic, then they would be required to comply with the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitating the structure. The uses that would be allowed for a structure are are, you know, the only limitation, you could potentially convert it to another use. An accessory dwelling units. Potentially, you could convert a portion of the structure typically accessory dwelling units are limited either to the 1,200 square foot maximum for a two-bedroom or 850 square foot maximum for a one-bedroom structure. So they would be limited in regards to the size of the ADU, but they could convert a portion to an ADU and a portion to an accessory structure potentially. If the structure was considered not deemed historic, then then the minute staff would have to administratively review the improvement to the project. Any type of improvement to the structure that results in modifying more than 50% of the of that structure, if it's not historic, potentially would result in a demolition of that structure at the site. So unless they pursue variance to permit the restoration of the building, that is more likely with historic structure. It's less likely with a nonhistoric structure from staff's perspective.
Okay, all right, very good information. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Frank or Sam, any questions?
Yeah, sequence of of activity, there's lots of, it seems like what-ifs in this project is that are we looking to approve or deny for a particular set of activities now? Or are we waiting for the decision basically on what to do with the barn?
So we are merely asking for, in the proposal, we are asking for approval for a variance, which would allow for the retention for allow for the structure to exceed the maximum maximum square footage for the site. We are not looking at constraining the types of uses for the property. If the commission wished to constrain the types of uses, we'd have to relook at that on whether the commission has that authority and whether it may have to go to another hearing body to determine whether we constrain uses.
Well, not so much constrain uses, but at least some of the design in the plans show, you know, driveways and things taking part of or very, very close to the barn. So is the is is the barn like trees that need to be protected in a on a site? Would this have to be during the construction of the house, the new house? Would the barn have to have special protection?
Yes, so the expectation, so the the objective of pursuing the variance, of course, is to preserve the barn. And part of that is because the applicant does not want to go down the path of doing a historic resource evaluation. They they can be expensive. And there is a potential that it could be deemed historic. And if it is deemed historic, then the potential use of that site is more constrained. And the cost of improvement to that building is probably much more expensive. So the applicant chose the option of preserving and the expectation is with this approval, the applicant would need to maintain this building or retain this building. Potentially, it could, very much like many buildings in the city, it could deteriorate through neglect and collapse. And then at that point, it could be removed. They are not obligated to rehabilitate it. We hope that they would if it's historic, but that is a choice on their part.
Great, thank you.
Frank, any
And also want to add, so the decision before you is is the design review and those have specific findings, you know, based on your review of the project and the the residential design guidelines that the city has, and then the variance has findings. So I think you're limited to those actions and not not necessarily going beyond those boundaries and trying to do something with regards to preservation of a historic structure, which that I don't believe the design, I don't believe the design guidelines really addresses, but and I and I don't believe the findings address either in the designer view finding. So just wanted to make sure you're, you know, you understand where if you were to make make recommendations kind of those boundaries.
Okay, thank you.
Frank, any questions?
At this point, no questions. Thank you.
Okay, and I've had all of my questions answered. So do we have the applicant or the architect for the applicant present who wants to make a presentation?
Yes, the applicant is present.
Okay, and that's 10 minutes, up to 10 minutes?
Yes, they are provided up to 10 minutes.
Okay, and who who is the applicant? Or who's going to be speaking?
I am the applicant, hello. But I also have the architect with us and maybe he's best for doing the presentation. I wouldn't know where to start.
Okay, yeah, my name is Chad. I'm an architect for the project. But anyway, one of the reason we start a project for beginning is the house with no garage and the first floor and the second floor totally disconnect. The previous owner uses for rental property. So totally disconnected, the first floor, no, almost like very minimal access from first floor, second floor. So the the new owner came in, asked me to help in term connect the first floor, second floor together, then make a more useful space. And also the house doesn't have garage. That reason, if I'm looking around, find any option, we explore many options. And finally, we figured out the option for a garage current location right now. And we have, we took one simple additions into the house and And originally, we wanted a barn would be removed because everything like could be endangered. Now we wrote, it's kind of quiet, the structure not really structured sound at all. So we thinking about like demolish, but after consult with, with Sean, there's some historical issue. So at the, in, at the moment, we okay to keep it. But if the city, like, we can go either way, if they want to reserve it. I think the owner, I talked to owner and he willing to preserve it. And the use up to the city decide what to do with it. But the main thing is about the main house because he bought this one about six months ago and we've been waiting, go through the process. It took quite a long time. He lived in different cities and we pay mortgage for this one for six months without any further process until bidding department yet. So we pay, so to make it short, right now, with the only thing we ask is the barn getting up to the city, planning permission, like decide what to do with it. We fight with it, either remove it or keep it and limited to use, that can be fine. We could ask if we can have approval to move ahead with the addition. And the barn could be laid on that issue, like we can resolve, laid on that road. Could be removed or can be modified or could be whatever the city decide and the owner can go along with it. And yeah, I think, yeah, any question if you can ask?
Can I make one comment as well?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, I may, I, I want to live there with my family. I'm not a builder. I'm not a developed professional developer or anything. I just really love the city. Family of three generations. We want to, we want to live there. And that's the reason why we don't want those two units, that situation. We want one integrated house, you know, where me and my family can, can live.
Okay. Anything else from the applicant or the architect?
Yeah, just simple, I think that's all we have at the moment. If you have any question, yeah, we will, yeah, we'd be more than happy to answer your questions.
Okay. Seeing as you're done, why don't we go ahead and open it up to the commissioners for questions for that or the applicants, architect. Michael, you want to start? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just have one simple quick question. It looks like the art, the design is, is only addition and also some remodel. So my question for the architect owner is, are you guys going to replace all the exterior material? I know that some of the notes call for match existing. But the main question is like, I'm just curious, like you, you, are you replacing all the existing window or the sightings?
Yeah, I can answer that. Yeah, we don't replace all the siding. We kept all the siding, existing siding. Only remove the portion, we can have additions. We, we did, we painted. And the new addition, because we want to separate the addition with an existing house, we change the material internally. Horizontal with siding is a little bit more uptrend in term the design wise, but in term all existing siding can be remain.
What about windows and patio doors?
The window can be remain, majority of them. That's going to be up to the owner if the budget allow. I recommend we place based on the, some of them like single pane. So we have replaced the door pane from the meter tied to 24, but whatever budget allow, they can under the place it, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sam, do you have any questions for?
Yeah, questions about the ADU. It is quite a hike up to where the ADU will be. And are there any safety requirements for safe passage? On something like that, that's technically a separate unit? And will the, and will also be separate sewage and power to that site?
Correct. It's going to be separate. It's about four, I remember about four or five feet above the finish for the second house because a great change. The neighbor in the back are quite higher because it's slow, keep going up. In term of the power supply, everything going to be separate. We have a separate panel of that, yeah.
But is there any kind of, I mean, again, that's a long hike. It probably wouldn't be an ADU in my mind for someone with any disabilities or a senior because it's, it's quite a hike. So that's my question. Is there any requirement for like safe walkways or railings and those kinds of things for that?
Sam, might that be a better question for Sean?
Okay.
Yeah, we do, we do have gravel and we do have stair go up to that unit in the back, yeah.
Yes, so we're, we're not, so in regards to the first question about sewage, so there is a requirement for a separate connection to the lateral for a dwell, for a second dwelling in like an ADU. This project will have to go through a building permit process. And I'm talking about the ADU. I'm not aware of any requirements, especially complying with Americans with Disability Act that's applicable to a single family home or to an ADU that would require more accessible access to the overall site or including the ADA or the ADU, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sam, anything else?
No, that's it.
Great, thank you. Jude, any questions?
No questions.
Frank, any questions?
No questions.
I have one that just, it seems like there might be some, I mean, it's a fairly steep lot. Actually, it's two questions. The retaining walls kind of around the first floor parking pad seem to be failing a bit and that's a fairly steep slope. Is there going to be further support of retaining walls put in? And then secondly, in the back right where the neighbor is, I don't see, and maybe I missed it, anything regarding a back fence. So if you could answer those questions.
Sean, you want to answer? You want me to answer this one? Yeah, I guess.
Those are, yeah, those are project specific questions for the architect in regards to whether you're replacing those retaining walls or the fence.
Yeah, the retained wall very rarely, it's not really accessible high, kind of because the slopes are from very low. So the, so what I understand the question about the height of the retaining wall, that's what you concerned, may I?
So on the left side of the property, there's retaining walls that are kind of bowing in. And on the right side, kind of above the barn, it's, you know, relatively steep. But there aren't any retaining walls. In your pictures, it just shows, you know, kind of like a grassy knoll type of thing. But I think it's a little bit steeper than that. But my question's more specifically on the left with the retaining walls partially failing, are you going to be restirting those, reinserting those or whatnot? And then of course, part two is the back right portion. There is no, not really any fence or anything up there distinguishing you between you and the neighbor behind.
Yeah, on the right side, actually we show, rendering so like probably, probably accurate because of the, the barn kind of, kind of really down below the earth right now have some kind of wooden, wooden retaining wall. And the earth right now kind of quite high, similar with the first floor of the house, existing first floor of the house. So the right side, we don't have, sorry, because the earth got to burn up, kind of slowly. Like very similar with the rendering you see right now. The left side, we, because the, right now, the, they do have some kind of open driveway up like carport. So the retaining wall, if you look at a civil engineer, she for drains, it very low retaining wall too. It's not something high like five, six foot high or seven, eight foot high. It's kind of gradually go up. So it's got a very minimal like exposing the retaining walls.
And there is a fence in the back of the house, by the way.
Yeah, there's a six foot fan like in the back of the house and a neighbor housing quite higher than us. Probably about it, if you talk about a floor to floor, probably they like about 12 to 14 foot higher than us.
Okay, I didn't. On the back right, the back left, there's fence. Is it just a little thin wire fence? Is that why I'm missing it?
Yeah, right now, eventually we're going to replace all wood transfer privacy. It's got some wire fence right now on the right side, but eventually it's going to be wood fence, yeah.
Yeah, it's, there's like an, almost like an ADU right directly behind the property, looking out over your property.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So I guess we're done with commissioner questions. We'll go ahead and close that off. Sean, do we have any public comment on this? Project?
I have not received any. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this item for 800 El Monte Avenue? I do not see any hands raised or anyone who would like to speak on it. Chair?
Okay, then we'll close the public comment and open it to commissioner discussion. Who would like to start? Sam, I'm calling on you.
Okay. I think, I think it's a great project, but I do have questions about the sequencing and also that retaining wall. You know, looks dangerous to me. So I'm unsure if all of the elements have been, have been processed in this application. This seems to me to be several things that are kind of left undone. So I like, I like the design and it looks great. But in some ways, it's, it's not fitting as just discussed about fences. That there's, there are places that I have questions. That's why I was raising the questions about the ADU is that it's, it's an unusual place in terms of the climb up to it for someone's use. So that's, I like the design, but I have questions about some of the elements.
Okay. Jude, any question or any comments, discussion?
Well, well, one, I think it's, it's definitely an improvement and it's tastefully done, working within the limits of remodel. You know, I think the ADU, Sam, can be, not to create a discussion, but it could be a rent, it could be a rental for a young college student. Doesn't have to be any elderly people. And so there's no restrictions there. So I think it's where it can be and it works well. It's well designed. I, my only comment is I would, I would love to see that barn remain. Ironically, I've driven by this barn for 30 years now and never really noticed it. Cause to me, that's, it's, it's, it's an asset. And, and for the applicant, you know, it provides screening from a very busy road and I would, I would find great use for it. So I would love to see some restriction on demolition of that in the future. Or, but I, but if our action tonight, I solely limited to design review, no issues there. And I, I see based upon what I've seen in the past justification for the variants, I can make the findings for the variants for the additional square footage. And so even if the barn comes out, the project complies. So I'm in favor for both the variants and approval on design review with the heavy handed suggestion to the applicant to preserve the barn.
Great, thank you. Michael, any comments?
Yes, yeah, I also like the project, like the design. It's a, it's a small addition and some remodel in for the interior. But I think for the aesthetically, it's, it's a great improvements from the street. So, you know, good use of material, try to, you know, good updates for the design. My only concern is that the reason I asked about the exterior material existing versus new is that I noticed the existing window are all white vinyl frame window. And the, the rendering are showing this all dark, the whole house is a dark brown, you know, to, for the, the contemporary look. So I just want to make sure that the, the project would not ended up with the mixture of existing white vinyl and some of the brown or dark, dark color windows together. So I just want to make sure that the, the material, exterior material, they're going to be all consistent with the design. So on the other hand, the variants all makes sense in consideration of the potential historical barn. And, you know, way to preserve it or I think it's all makes sense to me. So I'm in favor of the, the project. Thank you.
Great. Frank?
Yeah, so as I understand this, we're doing the variants to let them add additional square footage to the house because the barn's on the property and because of that, it exceeds the buildable square footage. So it would be nice if we had an answer on the barn before we move forward. Because when the owner spoke, when they first looked at this project, their intent was to just tear the barn down. And so that, that somewhat stuck with me and somewhat bothers me. If they're going forward to do, or the city's going forward, which is kind of my question here, with the historical analysis, if the historical analysis comes up that it is historical and it does have value, then I guess it would need to be preserved. It couldn't be torn down. And then I'd be fine with the, with the variants to let them have the house be a little bit bigger because, you know, then the barn stayed. To me, the bigger question here, I think the project's fine. I think the house, the, the work they're going to do is fine. It's just how do we as a commission try to ensure that the, the barn, if deemed historical, does stay? And ideally would be that it's at least put into some type of a condition that it doesn't deteriorate further and come to the point that it falls down on its own. And we've seen these things happen before too. And then it's deemed a hazard and then it is just torn down and it's gone. So, you know, I just want to bring this up as a, as conversation of what we think our way through this. Is there some, question is, is there some way that our commission can leverage the granting of the larger buildable square footage in the short term to make the, the owner happy with some type of an exchange that in the longer term, we all get to keep the barn. Like Jude, I've driven by this as long as I've lived in Los Altos, right? I'd like to see it stay. And we have so few barns now left in the city, you know, for our next generation to appreciate. It would be great if this one could be saved. So those are kind of my thoughts. I'm in favor of the project, but I'd like to find if there's a way that we could use our commission to make sure that we increase the chances that the barn is there when this project is, is moving forward or completed.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I think the house is fine. I do also have some concerns in regards to the barn. Looking forward, they build the house out or whatever. They don't pursue the historical analysis of the property. And then the property, just the barn sort of dilapidates. But I'm not sure, and maybe this is a question for Sean. If it was a historical barn, are they required to maintain it?
So, so the historic preservation ordinance does stipulate that historic property, owners of historic properties are required to maintain it. However, and that's enforced by the building, chief building, chief that, the, by the building division, but, but it's, it's never occurred. We've, it could occur, but we've never enforced maintenance of a historic structure. You know, if, if you do approve a variance for this, they, they could never demolish the structure because the city is aware that it's potentially historic now. And if they ever come into city hall requesting demolition or requesting modifications of the structure, it's going to trigger historic resource evaluation. So I'll have to go down the path and having potentially this So I have to go down the path and having potentially historical commission evaluated, potentially having designer view commission evaluating it and staff reviewing it. But degradation till it collapses is a problem with a lot of historic buildings and we've typically not enforced it and we've not it is on the books, but it's not been ever enforced.
Okay. Do we happen to know if it is? Well, probably not, but there's the garage that's two parcels away at seven hundred El Monte. That is an older structure as well. And I don't know if there if anyway, they're both tied into the same historical analysis. But what I'm understanding from you, Sean, is we if we were to determine the variance was appropriate, they're under no obligation to do the historical resource evaluation. And if that's the case, they can let it continue to let nature take its course and the city wouldn't really enforce it. Or could they? Well, in order for them to rehab it or make it structurally, you know, because it looks like it's it's old and it's not in great shape. So for them to actually do any work on it to preserve it without it going, I mean, could they do that without it going through the historical resource evaluation?
No, I mean, unless unless, no, but there's there's, I mean, one, it's so degraded. It's structural, speaking with the applicant, I mean, and seeing the structure itself, I mean, it's it's pretty degraded. It would need to be structurally supported and any structural modifications greater than fifty percent is going to trigger rehabilitation potentially and evaluation by historian. And in regards to the structure down the street, it's my understanding is not tied to it. The history museum was very kind and assisted staff with members of the public in researching this building. They contacted Mountview and other historic inventories to try to figure out whether the site was historic. It is not tied to that building. But it does have similar forms as other barns as described in my report.
Okay. So it kind of comes back, at least in my mind, that the variance, although the letter of the law makes sense, the upkeep of it isn't required and it won't be forced on by the city. And so it's almost like we pretend it's not there anyways, because it it is likely to just continue to disintegrate and kind of let nature take its course. Unless they do the historical resource evaluation, which I think, as you've explained earlier, is expensive to do. So given those parameters, I am very much, I guess, tied in with what Jude's comments were earlier that I support the house project and with a heavy emphasis on, you know, please try to maintain it or do the historical evaluation to the barn to preserve it. You know, that that's really up to the owner. So I would support both the variance and the project. Any other comments by any of the commissioners or do I have a motion?
I guess, if I may, with with regards to, excuse me, with the variance, the variances for the floor area exceeding the maximum. So if if the barn is to the point of dilapidation and it's not it's not deemed a historic resource and it is demolished, then then that that in itself will resolve the issue of the floor area maximum being exceeded. So at that point, you know, the the barn would not be able to be replaced because essentially it's a it's a nonconforming structure with regards to floor area. It could be maintained, but once you structurally try to structurally modify it, then that becomes an issue as well. Again, it might be a different situation with regards to preserving for historic purposes, but for, you know, trying to rebuild like a new structure and say, well, I can utilize that floor area for something else. That's I don't think that's the case here.
Great, thank you, Steve.
David, can I just say just quickly? The way I look at this, either way, the barn, the barn, if the barn stays great, if the barn goes, the house itself stands on its own and is acceptable to me. So once again, I like it as an asset to the community. I would encourage the applicant to do something with it positively and hopefully keep it. But I don't, I think our hands are tied. Either way.
Yeah, no, exactly.
To the to the chair, I like to just point out to the applicant, just so he's aware. We do have a Millsak program that does provide for tremendous tax savings if they do pursue preservation of historic structure. So they can always speak to us about that and it's a great venue for them to preserve a barn and restore it.
Can I make a comment or not?
Who is that? The applicant?
Yeah, I am the owner applicant, yes.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I hear you all and I'm I'm personally in love with historical properties. I was pretty excited when somebody told me that this could be potentially historic. I will do everything I can to do the evaluation and claim those tax credits and try to keep it. That's that's something I plan to do.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay. Commissioners, any further comments? Does anyone want to make a motion?
Well, I would make a motion for, do you want to take this in two steps, David, or do you want to do them both simultaneously?
I would do them both simultaneously.
Okay, then I move that we approve V twenty one dash zero 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 four and S C twenty one dash zero zero two zero. The the for the project at eight hundred El Monte Avenue for the findings and conditions in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Frank?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jude?
Aye.
And David, aye as well. It's five zero to approve. Congratulations and please save our barn.
I promise I will. Thank you.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item, public hearing number four, S C twenty dash zero zero one eight at eighteen hundred Alfred Avenue. Staff, do we have a report?
Yes, I'll give a brief presentation and like usual, as I give the presentation, I'm going to turn my camera off because doing the doing the two simultaneously usually just freezes my screen. So as I'm setting this up, apologize, one sec. And if you can confirm, you can see my screen.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so this project includes twenty six hundred square foot first story and then eight hundred and two square foot second story for a total floor area of three thousand four hundred and two square feet. Just to let you know, there is a three hundred sixty one square foot attached accessory dwelling unit or A D U at the first story. The subject property is located in the south Los Altos area. It's on the southwest corner of the intersection of Alfred Avenue and Morton Avenue. Staff would consider this to be a consistent character neighborhood according to the design guidelines. We made that that determination based on the regular lot layout pattern and the orientation of of the similar sized properties in this neighborhood. Most of the properties have a twenty five foot front yard setback with garages facing the street. And as you're probably aware, and as I'll show on this, the next slide, this neighborhood has probably had mostly one story houses. There has been a number of houses with either second story additions or or new at one point, new two story houses. So there has been some some changes in this neighborhood, but we're still making kind of a overall determination that it's a consistent character neighborhood. And just to note, there's not really a uniform street tree in this neighborhood, but this older neighborhood has a lot of mature trees and a diversity of of mature front yard landscaping visible from the street. Moving on, so this just kind of represents the the existing neighborhood and the footprints of those residences abutting the property. As you can see in the slide, there are all two story houses directly abutting the residence across the street are one story residences. So the proposed house, excuse me, I'm going to mute myself for a sec. Apologize. So the existing house will be demolished. The driveway location will remain in the in the same location. Their fun orientation of the house will be oriented towards Alfred Avenue as it currently exists. And the exterior side facing Morton Avenue. The setbacks shown on the table here and included in the agenda report shows that the the proposed house meets the minimum required setbacks for the R one ten zoning district or slightly exceed the 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 minimums required. This is a considered a narrow lot per the zoning the zoning district definitions of a narrow lot because it is less than ninety feet for a corner lot. So the the exterior setback along the street side, excuse me, can't get this cleared up. The exterior setback along the right or or street side is twenty percent of the lot width. There's no exception for the interior side setback since this corner lot is more than eighty feet in width. As you can see, kind of the hatched areas, the the smaller second story, again, it's a little bit over eight hundred square feet. It's it's fairly recessed back from the majority is recessed back from both sides and then the rear and also some portion of the the front. It does have a larger setbacks again, on the on the side setbacks, a twenty seven point five foot setback on the left side, a twenty six point seven five foot setback on the right side. So they're in excess about of about ten feet of the required second story setbacks on the side. The the rear is also setback quite a ways from the required setback at forty eight feet. And that's almost twice the the required rear yard setback. I should note, and I'll bring it up in a later slide, you can see a second story rear balcony, which they they label as a terrace here. So the style of the house is kind of a French country architectural style. It has six twelve pitch roofs with hip roof structure, except for those front facing gables over the garage and the taller front facing gable over the the front porch entry. And and this is the the front elevation and it did go through a number of changes and alterations. Staff was concerned with, there's a front, this element to the left of the front door. It was it's where the stairway is and it originally had more of a a two story element. And so we went through some design modifications, the the designer proposed and to try to break up the that two story wall structure and and reduce the bulk, which is not supported in the residential design guidelines. So they addressed that by by adding that that roof element that you see here to the left of the front door to break up those elements. We also, staff also expressed potentially an opportunity to better integrate the gable roof over the front entry to better integrate that roof structure and kind of the overall design and and roof structure of the the other architectural elements as you see here. The overall height of the structure is twenty five point seven five feet, which conforms to the maximum height of twenty seven feet in the in the in this district. Wall play heights of the first story are nine and nine and a half feet and eight and a half feet of the second story, which is in keeping it scale with the neighborhood and not not really visually imposing on neighbor neighboring properties. Moving on, this is the the right elevation viewed from the exterior side or Morton Avenue. You can see here kind of that smaller massing of the second story and it's it, there's a good deal of articulate building articulation at the first story. And there are some windows on the side, but it's because it's facing the street side. We don't really see that as having any perceived privacy impacts. And I noted here with a with an arrow where there is a that second story balcony, which is kind of recessed back in with those steep sloping roofs that it has a a solid kind of railing structure inside of it. So it's it's kind of sunk in into that exterior facing roof structure and screened quite nicely there. With regards to the left hand side, this left elevation, as far as the second story windows, you just see that small window here with four and a half foot windowsill height. And so we don't really see that as having any privacy impacts. The rear elevation, again, I identified the balcony with an arrow. Again, it screened really well at the back with the roof structure here. It is set back almost fifty two feet from the rear property line. It doesn't have any direct views to the left side since it's it's recessed and blocked by the wall of the of the the bedroom area there. And so it's also designed to be five feet in depth, which is, you know, really respects the the residential design guideline recommendation of four feet to keep it a more passive use. So staff believes that this this balcony is designed well and in keeping with the residential design guidelines regarding mitigate mitigating the private potential privacy impacts. The applicant also with regards to to privacy issues, the applicant did reach out to thirteen of their surrounding neighbors. They communicated the proposed design plans. They asked if there was any concerns and they were willing to address. The applicant did receive ten favorable responses or no overall concerns. And they did not receive responses from three of the neighbors and we did staff did provide that as attachment. See, it came in right after the agenda was published and believe that was sent out in an email. With regards to landscaping and trees, this is the proposed landscape plan and then on the right hand side is the tree list. There are a number of mature trees on this property. There was an arborist report submitted to assess the trees. The arborist recommended preserving six of the trees and removal of four of those trees. They all four of those would be considered protected trees because they're over forty eight inches in circumference. But the the arborist, their recommendation was based on the fact that they're really not planted in ideal locations, nor were they probably trees that were purposely planted. They haven't been well maintained. The the owner apparently has a has an allergy to those trees, which is kind of a sort of another issue. And then the one tree at the back of the property line And then the one tree at the back of the property line. That you can see here, which is labeled removed redwood, is a sequoia, which is, which was topped and it's under utility line, so not, not in a very good location to begin with. Staff is not recommending any replacement trees because there is gonna be six trees that are being preserved, including two very large redwood trees and, and some other trees up at the, the front of the property in the corner. So just based on the size of the property and those trees, we think that replacement trees is not, not something that we would recommend at this point. But you can consider it in your, your approval, or sorry, your decision on the project. We did propose some conditions of approval specific to preserving those redwood trees to, for the applicant to propose a, a structural plan that that mitigates any potential impacts to those redwood trees along that right-hand side. There is a new landscaping proposed and it'll include pitas forum evergreen shrubs along the left and rear property line. And that will be used for screening to help mitigate any privacy concerns. But again, those showing you those elevations, we don't really think there will be too many direct views, potential views into the neighboring properties. So overall, we think that this project has good architectural composition that uses good quality materials. With that being said, I did share with you the potential opportunity to maybe address that front porch area, but it's a really minor detail and subjective issue that we defer to the commissioners on their views. With that, staff does recommend design review, commission approval of this designer view application subject to the findings and conditions contained in the agenda report. That concludes my presentation. I can answer questions and I believe the applicant is here with their designer. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Steve. Any questions from commissioners for Steve?
None. David, I just had one question. Steve, what other iterations of the, the front stair did they have? Did they have a larger window at any point or?
I'm trying to go back in memory. This, this application, it's been in the works for a while. It actually, they applied in 2020. It has an SC20 number. So I'm trying to go back in my memory. I, I can try to pull up while the applicant gives their presentation, but overall, I recall it just had. It had a, a two-story, the, the, the wall plane went up two stories in the front there and I'd have to look at the, the windows. I, I don't recall, but I can pull it up while we're, while we're getting the presentation.
If you, if, if you had any prior versions, it would be good to see, because it looks like they dropped the plate height in the stair tower. But if you can find any of those, that would be great to see.
Yeah, I believe I, Cornelia, the, the designer, she might be able to address that as well and as far as the plate heights, I think that was also a recommendation because it, it came in a little bit. Those plate heights were, I, I believe were a little bit taller and they, and they dropped overall. I believe they dropped it a little bit, but I have to go back in the design.
Thanks.
Anything else, Jude?
No.
Okay, Frank, any questions?
You. Questions and I, I thank Steve for the presentation, okay?
Yeah. Great, thank you. So Steve, if you could look that up for Jude, we'll go ahead and I don't have any questions as well. Ask applicant and or they're architect to make their presentation. Okay, we can't hear you for some reason.
Broken up.
No.
Cornelia, if you're having problems and you have the call-in number, that might be better. If you're having some problem. It's very.
No, you're, you're fluttering in your voice and it's very weak. Yeah, we, I'm sorry, we can't understand you.
If you, if you can pull it that.
Is this, does this work?
Okay, that's a little better.
Better, yeah.
I have microphones, this is a bit too.
Much better, thank you.
This option, how is this now?
That's better. There you go.
All right. All this high-tech equipment. So related to the question about the previous version, if I could share my screen, I have I have a shot of the original, our original design. I'm not sure, can I share my screen? Or?
There should be a box at the bottom with an arrow pointing up. That's a share screen under it.
Okay. So can you see this?
Yes. Okay.
Our initial submital.
Yeah.
With the tall staircase element. And that's front porch element. As opposed to the new to, to the new design that includes a, a roof element here that kind of mirrors this height. So it aligns with the, with the front, this front. Plate height in this design was taller, the, the first floor plate height was taller. Which we have reduced. So we have, there were quite a few iterations of this and, and the latest design is what we were able to produce that hopefully will meet all the requirements of the design guidelines.
Okay, do you have a, a presentation or are you just sort of answering questions?
I'm, I'm ready to answer questions. I think Steve's presentation was quite clear. And yeah, I, I, I don't know that we need to add or repeat anything.
Okay, great, thank you. Jude, do you have any questions in regards to the front windows?
Well. I look at the, I look at the windows and in the original submital, my question would be, how does the staircase go in front of the windows? And then I look at the, you know, what's in our packet. And it's kind of klugey. You know, there's windows going into false spaces and it looks forced. So to me, right now, between the two, I don't see a, a natural solution. I think there might be another solution out there. You know, and this is more commentary, but I guess for the applicant is, was there any other options for this stair in front? Did you ever pull the entry forward to let the gable of the entry express itself and you know, let the entry be more prominent and the staircase recede? That makes sense?
We never pushed the front porch far beyond the stair element. The furthest that we went was to align it with the stair element. Which allowed us to to have a complete gable over the stair. I'm not sure that it would work with, with the design we're trying to achieve. The further we push the, the front porch. The more we crowd that library at the front on the right of the entrance. That has windows going all the way around. So in terms of the, in terms of the staircase, if we look at the at, at the, at the first floor for a minute. And I think you have the, you have the plan. The even though it, this is a very large lot, the location of the stairs is not is, is, is not possible in too many places. Because of the limitations of the second floor. The, the only place where we can have a, a staircase is within the perimeter of the second floor. And that means either at the front where we have it or at the back where it would kill the kitchen and family room connection. Or on the right side, anywhere where it would fall in, within, you know, the, the, the space of the open space. So that's, that's sort of the constraint that I had to work with. In terms of the location of the stairs, which is what determines the other elements. Could we push the front porch more, maybe? I'm not sure that would change substantially. The look, but I'm open to your input.
Well, my, my question is, you've created a double wall on the first floor, correct?
It is only for the space under the stairs so that we could have that window. Yes, it's, it's a window that, that falls essentially under the stairs. Sorry.
If, if you look at your second floor plan, though, you have a second line. So that's assume of some kind of ledge in the stairs, so if you pull the outside wall back to that ledge, then the front entry gable would start expressing itself as more prominent of the stair. And then you can get rid of the little klugey roof line and maybe you'd have a nicer, taller arched window that goes lower. And maybe you have stone or other, another material below the window that breaks the scale of it. So I guess my point is, I think, I mean, literally staff's recommendations is, is, is good, but I think there are another option or two that you might want to consider to address everybody's concern without compromising your plan in any way.
Right.
That's my, that's my only question to you now, so I'll, I'll pass to the others.
Okay.
Michael, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have some question. The, for the designer, do you have any material bore or material you know, show on the drawing? I'm trying to figure out some of the material.
We have a sheet number one, A1.5.
I think it's A14 of the.
Okay, yeah, that's, okay, I saw that one. So the the, the roofing, is it a composition shingle or is it the concrete tile?
It's a concrete tile.
Concrete tile, okay. And then the garage door, it's, it's a frosted glass, right? Is that the intention?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's kind of contemporary. Okay. And then the stone veneer, that's just kind of like a gray color. Horizontal style stone, right?
The, the idea of the stone is to provide texture. But not necessarily more color. We're, we're looking for a low-key color scheme, but the stone provides more texture in that.
Okay, and then you have the wood, wood trim around the window. That's a typical, okay, right? Okay. Okay, all right, that's, that's the question I have. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, Michael. Sam, any questions?
No, I like, I like the design, no questions.
Frank, any questions?
I'm good for now, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any questions myself. So Sean or Steve, do we have any public input?
Sorry, just trying to find my unmute button. I guess at this time, if anybody has any public input, you can unmute yourself. Also, I see the, the owners here, if they want to take an opportunity to say anything, I would probably give them, but they don't have to, but they're on the screen. So if anybody has any other public comment. If you can unmute yourself or, and or.
Well, let's, let's first ask the, the, I'm sorry, my error. Let's ask the applicant, do you have any discussion you'd like to have in regards to your property?
No, not really.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so Steve.
Yeah, again, if anybody has any public comment, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. If there's a lot of people, we'll, we'll try to make it a little more organized, but.
Okay. We give it about 10, 15 seconds to.
Find your mute button.
Yeah.
I, I don't see any, and since we didn't get any opposition from neighbors, I, I don't suspect there is any, so.
Okay, okay, we'll close the public comment on that and open up her discussion amongst the commissioners. Do I have anyone who wants to begin? Seems like Jude, you're have some comments in regards to that, anything to add or any discussion?
Well, my, my only, once again, my only concern really is the stair. I think it, it can be better with further study. Think it looks a little forced now. And I agree with Michael, the, the garage is out of character with the style. Other than that, you know, I, I think it meets the intent of the guidelines, especially with its consistency of with other homes along that side of the street. It's a consistent character neighborhood, meaning that one side of the street is two stories, the other is one. But as you go further down Alfred, there's a lot more going on with one and two-story homes. So you know, couple everything with the script, the mature trees remaining, you know, I'm in favor of the project, although I would want, once again, a little more study of that stair tower.
Thank you. Frank, any discussion points?
No, I think it's fine. I'm, I'm with it for this, this project.
Michael?
Yeah, I, I seen the the overall, the, the house is meets the, the design guideline. You know, there's no privacy issue, it fits the, the scale and the massing fits the neighborhood and adjacent houses. However, there are some, like what you already mentioned. You know, the stair tower and how those roof come in, especially at the front. I, I, I like the project, but I think it has room now, it's an opportunity to improve it, it could be better, a lot better. You know, for example, that, I mean, not just a stair, the, or the roof and the, the foyer that the entry that the, that form, the roof form, you know, can possibly, you know, can be considered to pull forward and have become more prominent or even, you know, at the corner, the corner library. You know, can tie into, I mean, I'm just suggesting, you know, some, you know, a, a direction. You know, can tie into, I mean, I'm just suggesting, you know, some, you know, a, a direction to explore. That that roof can be all tied together. Or even bring up a little bit, another six inch more to make it more prominent for the corner. It's a corner lot. So you don't have any, any house on the right side, it's an open street corner, so. It, it's an opportunity to, to make some more improvement and make it more prominent. And the garage door, you can make it, I mean, thi- this is a French country style architecture. I, I think that, you know, you something, be careful on the, some of the material you can consider to, you know, further. Enhance the, the style, like the, the garage door, you can consider some, you know, the better compatible. Style for that, the garage door. And then the. The trim around the window. And the, the door. I feel when I look at the, the rendering or the, the drawing. I feel I'd like to see some stone or precast rather than a wood trim around the window. But I guess that, that leads to you. So, and then a couple other minor stuff, I noticed some of the window, the roof line. They don't, they don't match on, with the elevation, for example, the garage. On the elevation, while looking right now, the garage. Eve overhand, it's pretty much minimal or no overhand, but on the roof plan, you have some overhand. That's why some, some, all those detail, they don't, you know, and then the, the last one is the. Finish for elevation. Somehow there's some discrepancy between the finished floor on the elevation and on the civil drawing. You know, maybe six inches or something. So all this minor should be, you know, further look into some of the detailing stuff. So I think that overall can be more improved. That's what I have.
Great, thank you, Michael. Sam, any additional comments?
No, no comments, I'm in favor of the project.
Yeah, my only comments would be again, kind of going back to the stairway. I think if you kind of wrap the. Stone veneer on the bottom of that where kind of the top of the window is. And then somehow tie it in like Jude had suggested. I think that makes a little bit more sense to me from an aesthetic look instead of my focus going directly to that. However, I, I, I'm not in a position to just say, no, it has to, you have to do that. I think it meets all the criteria. I think it is an attractive house, but as others have mentioned. With a little bit more tweaking could be better, so I'll just kind of leave it at that. Do we have any motion for many of the commissioners at this point?
Well, my only motion, and I don't want to make a motion yet, but you know. I think part of what we do is to strive for. You know, the best project we can get. This one is eighty-five percent there. And, you know, I know it's been in the works for a long time. And I don't want to penalize the applicant in any way, but. Once again, with some simple adjustments, I can, I think it's that much better of a. Project that, you know, once again, you know, this is our role to weigh in on these items, so. To me, if I were to make a motion, I would move to continue it with further study of the stair tower. With some specific input that we can give directly to the applicant if that's allowed. And that, and, and couple that with some of the other items with, that Michael's already pointed out with the garage door. And overhang, I think would come back as a, a superior project. And once again, it's quite attractive now, but I think with a little more tweaking, it would be that much better. Is that a motion? Well, it's, it's a discussion. Again, I don't want to feel, I don't want to penalize the applicant in any way, but since this has been in the works since twenty twenty. And quite honestly, we've just seeing it, I don't see any harm in bringing it back for just one more quick look.
Any other discussion or motion?
Well, if. I'm gonna move to continue item. SC twenty dash zero zero one eight, that's eighteen hundred Alfred Avenue. With the specific direction to the applicant to. Change the door, garage door to be more consistent with the style of the home, French style. Two, to. Confirm the overhangs are consistent throughout the, the front elevation, specifically at the garage. And three, to bring back an iteration of the front stair tower. That's slightly recessed from the front entry, okay, that uses a, that lengthens. The window above lower downwards towards the earth and then takes those stone wainscote across the bottom. So the front entry reads as its own element, proud of the stair tower. Without.
Steve, did you get all of that to begin with?
I'm. Typing madly and I'll repeat what I think I heard. Give me one sec. Okay, so I heard that you'd like the garage door to. The, the style of the garage door to change to, to better match the style of the house, architectural style of the house. The over, eve overhangs along the front elevation should be consistent between the elevation plans. And this floor plans, site plans. The front entry. I guess I, I was a little, if Jude can maybe provide. That statement again, I, you were talking about lengthening the top window downward. And making the front entry more proud, like more prominent?
Pushing it forward just a little. So it, it becomes more of a focus than the stairwell.
Well, it's, it's actually the opposite. We're, we're gonna take away the double wall of the stair tower. And make it a single wall, but that will take the innermost wall, and so that will allow the. The entry roof line to express itself. So the entry roof, roof does not change at all. It just will have an offset back towards the stair.
Oh, I see, okay. And then with regards to the window, the top window, I was a little confused on how you want that pulled down.
Well, no, the, the height of it would stay where it is, but they could lengthen it toward downwards if that roof line that goes across. Is eliminated. Because eliminating the roof line, but then adding the stone wainscoting and making the. Front porch more prominent, I think will address my concerns about the kluge-ness of what's going on there.
Okay, so remove the, actually remove that. That, that roof structure. That we see now that breaks it up. And add, add the wings coating and. Since it'll be somewhat, a little bit recessed, you think it'll be less prominent and. The front entry will be the more prominent feature that you see.
And a, and a typical solution, once again, I, I don't mean to micro design this, but. This is just a suggestion as a way to solve what I think Michael and I see as being issues. So that wainscoting that goes across the bottom doesn't necessarily have to be the height of the rest of the house, it could be taller. As well to ground the stair tower. And it'll allow nice landscaping in front.
Hey, so Steve, can you go ahead and repeat that back and then I'll ask for a second?
Okay, so from the top, change the, the garage door style to meet. To match the, be consistent with the overall style of the house. To. Make sure that the, the eve overhangs are consistent across elevations. You want the stair element actually recessed back. Which would make the front entry a little more prominent, remove the quote. Well, one suggestion is to move, remove the klugey looking, looking roof line. And roof element, but to add some stone element at the first story to, to break up that, that two. That two story wall plane, whether the applicant, however the applicant wants to address sort of the, the application of the stone veneer. We can take a look at that as well.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and take a vote?
Was that second, was that second Sam?
That was Sam. We'll go ahead and, and vote. Frank?
Hi.
Okay, Sam?
Hi.
Jude?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And David, I as well. And do we have a timeframe on, bring it back or just? How is our schedule for the next couple of times?
Yeah, I think we probably don't have a date certain. It'll depend on when we can get some revisions back from the applicant and. I think we'll probably just have to keep this up and ended.
Okay. Great, so that ends discussion, item number four. Before we get to discussion, item number five, Michael, I'm gonna have to ask you to take over. Because I have to recuse myself for the six ten Tressi Lane because I live within five hundred feet of the property. So, Michael, I'm gonna go ahead and sign off. And wish you all a good evening and Michael, if you could go ahead and then just close everything out.
All right, thank you, Chair.
Great, thank you all, have a good evening.
Okay. All right, so. Let's continue to our last item on the agenda. That's six ten Tressi Lane. So can we have the staff make the presentation, please?
Sure, I'm more than happy to. And before that, I don't think I can share my screen because there's another shared screen. Right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, can everyone see my shared screen?
Yes.
Great. So, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners, this is Chad, your Associate Planner. Before you, I'm presenting a design review application, SC twenty one dash zero zero four zero for a new two story house at six ten Tressi Lane. The project consists of two thousand three hundred ninety-three square feet at the first story and a one thousand and fifty-six square feet. And the second story for total of three thousand four hundred and forty-nine square feet. This slides provides you a rendering of the proposed house giving from Tressi Lane. The subject site is located on Tressi Lane between Palmer Way and South Springer Road. Tressi Lane is a cul-de-sac branching out from Rosetta Avenue that serves fourteen single family residential properties. The subject property also backs up to properties fronting of a leader drive. With regard to the characteristics of the immediate neighborhood. Steph finds neighborhood is a consistent character neighborhood as defined by residential design guidelines. As shown on this slide with all the supporting pictures and neighborhood context map. The immediate neighboring properties are all one story with similar front setback patterns that is about twenty-five feet. Also, a low scale horizontal eve lines are found with plate heights between eight feet and nine feet. Most garages are attached to existing homes in the front yard facing the street. Roof materials are either composition shingles or wood shake with simple roof forms in addition to properties at six twenty. Six forty-one and six forty-six Tressi Lane due to recent house renovations. Lexterial materials commonly used includes tucko and wood siding with brick or stone veneer and wood trim accents. This slides provides the project site plan and the zoning compliance justification. The new proposed house is outlined in the bolded black line. With the second story crosshatched as appeared in the gray color. Existing house is provided in the lighter gray hash lines. As you can see that the existing house is. Sorry, the, the proposed house share a very same orientation concept as the existing house. And the focus of structure volume will be moved to the front compared to the existing house structure. The house is found consistent with the R one dash ten zoning district. Development standards including setbacks, lock coverage, floor area ratio and height limit. The overall height is twenty-four five point five feet, that is less than a maximum height of twenty-seven feet. This slides shows the first full plan, the first floor includes an attached two car garage to the left. A kitchen with a dining room and a family room in the back and a one guest room and a study room showing a guest. Bathroom to the right, the staircase is located in the central area with a storage room underneath. On the second story, there are three bedrooms proposed. The master bedroom along with the master bathroom are located to the right. And the rest two bedrooms with one shared bathroom are located to the left. This is the proposed front elevation. The architecture of the house is changed from one story traditional ranch style to a two story contemporary grand style. It is designed with a steep roof pitch with five point five inch twelve slope. At the, at the both first and second story living area. And two point seven five inch twelve for the covered porch and the attached patio covers in the front and the back. The proposed house features a plate height of nine feet for the first story. And seven feet and two inches for the master bedroom at the second story to the right end. The remaining of the second story will have eight feet tall plate height. The design of the house includes integrated heap and fable roof, consistent horizontal eve lines, extended entry porch. Modern style windows and train accents. This is the east side elevation at the second story. Three windows are proposed as shown in blue that are parallel with the east side property line. Including two small windows that have a sill height of four feet and six inches. And a one medium sized foil window with a sill height of two feet and eight inches. Additionally, there are two windows depicted on this elevation that I highlighted in orange. However, the two windows are actually facing the front yard, not, not facing the side yard. They are just projected here to the angle of the house placement. On the left western side of the second story, two windows are proposed, including one medium sized. Two panel sliding window in the bathroom with a sill height of four feet and eight inches. And a medium sized foil window with a sill height of two feet and eight inches. Steph found the privacy impact to both side neighboring properties are very minimal. Due to the windows in the living area are designed with a minimum sill height of four feet and six inches. The foil errors window have a lower sill height of two feet and eight inches. However, the foil area will not be accessible by any future occupants. Also, the foil area will be far away from the side property lines. As, if, if you remember from the site plan and the floor plan. Therefore, Steph consider the privacy impact to both side prop, neighboring properties are very minimal. Along the rear south second story elevation, there are six windows proposed. Three small sized windows with a sill height of three feet and eight inches as highlighted in blue. One medium sized window for the master bathroom has a sill's height of four feet. And two large window are found, including one, two panel window that is now highlighted in the red color. This window has a sill height of two feet and eight inches. And the other large window has three panel. Proposed in the bedroom number two with a sill height of three feet and eight inches. Steph considers the rear elevation windows have incorporated some design considerations. To mitigate the privacy impact since it appears that the larger windows are proposed with further setbacks. However, the fenestration along the rear elevation may still arise potential. However, the fenestration along the rear elevation may still arise potential privacy impact. The applicant proposed a new landscaping plan for the privacy mitigation that is going to be presented next. This is the proposed landscaping plan. The plan includes eight existing trees that are that will be all retained on site and a plenty of new trees, shrubs, and ground covers, which appears to be very dense. The evergreen screening vegetation proposed along rear and both side property lines along the the right property line, a total of 16 screening vegetation will be planted, including five tawang and 11 blackstone Peters forum. Along the left property line, eight Japanese privet, eight eight golf Carolina laurel cherry and one fern pine are proposed. Along the rear property line, six English murrell, nine Blackstone Peters forum, five green opposite bush, four dark Carolina lory, sorry, lory cherry, and a one fern pine will be planted. The proposed evergreen screening will vary in size within the range of six feet to 16 feet tall and six feet to 15 feet wide at their mature age. The fern pine tree will grow up to 30 feet to 50 feet tall and 15 feet to 20 feet wide. All the evergreen screening vegetation are conditioned to be at least 15 gallons in size and the fern pine shall be planted with 24-inch box in size as proposed. Since this is a new two-story house that will be located in the consistent current neighborhood, Steph added this slide to discuss the compatibility of the two-story in the immediate neighborhood. According to the residential design guidelines, a good neighbor design in the consistent character neighborhood shall have design elements, material, and scale found within the neighborhood. Neighborhood. Emphasize should be on designs that fit in and lessen the abrupt changes. For the scale and messing, Steph collected a comparative data to show the the plate heights, roof slopes, and overall ridge heights in the immediate neighborhood. The plate heights are varying from eight feet to nine feet. Two roof slopes are found with predominant 4:12 roof slope and 6:12 roof slope as the minority. With the varying plate heights and roof slopes, the overall ridge heights reach to a range from 14 feet, six inches to 18 feet and one inch. The proposed second story eve line is 18 feet and nine inch tall. Steph finds the proposed home has a reasonable design relates to the bark and the messing because the second story eve line does not perform an abrupt change to the existing home overall ridge heights as shown in the street state at the bottom of the slide. Besides, the major extent of the second story has a setback of at least 46 feet from the front property line will further reduce the appearance of the second story bark and messing from the street view. For the design elements, homes in the immediate neighborhood has a common design elements in ranch style homes, including sloped roofs, consistent horizontal eve lines, entry porch extended from the house roofing, and a consistent architectural detailing such as window and door trains, exterior window shutters, and a stone or brick wind scotting. The proposed two-story house has incorporated some of the existing design elements, including sloped roof forms, consistent horizontal eve lines, extended entry porch, window and door train accents. With regard to the materials, the proposed design utilized the construction materials that are also find consistent with the immediate neighborhood context. That includes composition shingles, horizontal and vertical wood siding, wood window and door trims, and a veneer stone accents at the entry. Based on the three design consideration presented above, Steph found the proposed two-story house meets the intent of the of the residential design guidelines for a new Tudor house located in the consistent character neighborhood. Additional dance landscaping materials as discussed trial are also proposed as a mitigation design measure to string and lessen the new story appearance to the immediate neighborhood. But it will be up to the Commissioner's decision tonight to give the houses considered fitting into this one-story home neighborhood. Lastly, for community outreach, the applicant has installed a billboard on site starting late October 2021. The owner also sent out the city fight mails as the community outreach as shown on the slide. So with all the information presented, Steph recommends the Design Review Commission approve the design review application SC20-0040 subject to the listed findings. Now Steph concludes the presentation and open for questions. Thank you for your listening.
Thank you, Ja, for your nice presentation. Any Commissioner have a question for the staff?
None.
None. Frank?
Nice presentation. No question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, next one is, do we, uh, do we have the applicant or the architect here to to speak?
Yes, I'm the applicant and we have my architect online as well.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, thank you everyone for the wait for the call. I'd give my comments brief and I would love Steve who's our architect to present in more detail. We've been Los Altos residents. My name is Guru. This is my wife, Pranit. We've been Los Altos residents since 2010. We love the town. We've seen it develop over the last, you know, 10, 12 years. We love the character of the town. And we moved here. We had no kids. Now we have two. So our lives have changed substantially. As you can see, we are sitting in a bedroom in a 1,300 square foot house with two very high-energy boys. So, you know, it's time after years and years of waiting to to really put down, to build a house that can be our forever home. We have done our best to meet the city's guidelines. We have reached out to our neighbors. You know, we live in a wonderful street and we've heard back not from every neighbor, but certainly the four neighbors surrounding our house have been very supportive of the project. I'm not sure if any of them are on the call today, but I'm very thankful to them for their support. We also received privacy-related questions from our neighbors to the rear, which is understandable, and we're addressing those concerns as as was presented just now using further landscape screening. And I would love for Steve, who's our architect, to present in more detail.
Thank you, Pranit. How you doing? And Guru, thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners, for taking your time tonight to consider the approval of this new two-story home for Guru and Pranit Chahal. I also want to thank Ja for her great presentation. It almost took everything away that I had. So, thank you. So I can I can make it brief. There's just a little bit of history on this project. The owners had approached our firm in 2013, and by 2014, we had designed a one-story addition for them. But we put, they put that on the shelf after we finished the working drawings because the one-story addition just did not work well. The existing house has some non-conforming issues and just takes up too much of the backyard. And so we failed it. And now here we are today. They've got a couple more kids. They want backyard. So the best way to do that is to do a two-story. Of course, it's very challenging to be the first one in the neighborhood to have the two-story. But we had, we've addressed those challenges by privacy screening where needed, placing the sills for the windows that face the side yards at four foot six high and having the eve heights that respect the current surrounding homes. We kept the height and mass of the building to a minimum by using the nine-foot plate height at the first floor and eight-foot plate height at the second floor. Many of my other clients want 10-foot-high plate heights at the first floor and nine on the second. So this one, we were able to keep it down and and tuck it in with the with the neighborhood. Now, I just had a couple of exhibits that I would like to share. This one, do you see the map of the area that's expanded a little bit? I just, do you see that? Yes, no? Okay. So I have our 610 Tressi Lane here and the yellow dots just show where there are some two-story homes that exist. So we won't be the only one in the general area. And you can see by the way, um, the site is set, you see this one here, just shows how, you know, you've got that nice streetscape that shows this elevation next to this elevation, which is crooked and back a little bit. And this one, which is offset, steps back quite a bit. This kind of shows a little bit better what what's happening there. And I think that we fit into the neighborhood quite well. Now I'm going to try to get make this movie work that just, I think you saw this elevation. Ja showed it at the very first. This is a bit hopefully animated. I'm having a bit of, there it is. So I wanted to show how we kind of set the the second floor back from the front sides and rear and also the side windows up here are quite high. This is the bedroom window. So that concludes my presentation. Pam Jones of Karen Aiken and Associates, the Landscape Architect, is here to answer any questions. And of course, I'm here to answer questions as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Then, any question from the Commissioners for the applicant, the property owner, and the architect?
No questions.
Do you have any questions?
Just for the architect, was there ever any consideration of adding a window to bedroom three? Just to get some more light in that space?
Let me pull up that plan and see where bedroom is. Well, we wanted to minimize the side impacts, you know, the wind, the privacy impacts of that.
Okay, well, you you have it on the master bedroom side.
We do.
Yeah, so my, I actually my, and once again, I'll have my comments for later on, but the window in that bedroom three looks right into the side of the stair entry tower dorm or whatever you want to call, call it. So, once again, in spirit of improvement is, you know, I would be receptive to a better window configuration there or potentially turning, cutting back that stair tower or entry tower a little bit to just make that room feel a little nicer. Do you ever think about that?
Well, if you look at the the front elevation, windows were kind of pinched with the architectural roof forms of the garage coming back. So I can't, I can't really put windows there. I could put them on the side. But they would have to be smaller, smaller windows.
Okay, well.
You see the front elevation there, the how it's?
Yeah, I understand the roof lines coming up and the window in the bedroom is in the right spot. I just, was there ever an option to put a side window on this, in bedroom three?
Again, if 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 that's something that we want to put in, I mean, I'm sure the owners would love to have more windows.
Yeah, okay. That's all. That was my question. Thank you.
Thanks, dude.
Any other question from Commissioner Frank?
No, I don't have any questions, but I I do like the project and I do like the way they fit it to the corner lot. Actually, it's a, it's quite well thought through and attractive.
Okay, so for me, I have a question for the owner. Have you, I I understand you sent letters and notification to the neighbor. Any feedback from the neighbors about privacy?
Yes, we, for four of our neighbors towards the front, they were very supportive. No questions from the neighbors on our side. We had questions from our neighbors, right? We have two real neighbors. We have questions from one of the neighbors who then subsequently visited us in here in the house. So we walked her through the plans and also explained the screening plans from the neighbors. And those are some of the ones that were highlighted in Ja's presentation. And also, we have our landscaping architect here to answer any further questions on that as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I don't have any further question. So let's move on to the, open to the public. Is anyone from the public would like to speak?
I guess not. Hi, hi.
Can you say your name?
My husband, Mark. My name is Alicia, and I just wanted to add a quick comment.
Sorry, sorry. Your your name and address.
My, my name is Alicia Chen and my address is 625 Tressi Lane, Los Altos. So, Panit Guru and their family have been wonderful neighbors. And in talking with them, I feel like they have the best interest of our neighborhood in mind. And I've reviewed the plans and they're very tasteful, very attractive, and not imposing as a second story at all. So I'm actually very excited to have this new two-story home go up. I, my window, my house faces there, so I will probably see their house most of anybody. And so, so I think it'll increase the value of our street and our of our neighborhood. So I'm very, very supportive of their project. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any others from the public would like to speak?
We're the neighbor living 620 Tressi Lane. We really like.
Please, please state your name and address, yes.
This is Erica and Hannah from 620 Tressi Lane.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
We, we just want to say we like the design of the new house. We think it's elegant and blending well with the neighborhood. And I also think the architect is very considerable and not by not having windows in bedroom number three facing like our large window in in our bedrooms. And yeah, we really enjoy living with Guru and his family.
Okay, thank you. Right, anyone else from the public would like to speak?
Yes, could you hear us? She and six, but later, we are right behind the new properties, what they proposed. Basically, you haven't lived in there more than 30 years. And one of the area I like it is there no second-story house. And what I afraid of is number one, once you guys approved, maybe neighbors start to build a second-story house around us. And that's one major concern. And the basically, the 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 architect mentioned about the the privacy issue only front and the the side part, I'm not going to mention about backyard. So backyard, you know, we, hopefully you guys pay attention to the backyard about the privacy issues. That's major concern.
Okay.
And the, basically, I went to the city hall and talked about the their design. I don't know which is the original design or the revised design. However, they mentioned about the some trees. The trees may not be in a height, and I don't know what kind of tree they're going to put. I mean, when they, I understand that the tree may grow. But how long does it take to grow? And also, my wife talked to the owner. I believe that they tried to plant, plant to put the the fence because the fence were designed for single-story, not for a second story. I don't know what their plan is. Anyway, the privacy issue is one. And also the the windows. I understand that they're going to put maybe five windows facing to us. And I don't know the. And I don't know the what kind of windows they're into put like it's transparency or. Yeah, something. So I'd like to hear more about the privacy issues from the. And also commissioner, how your guys going to see the privacy issues?
Okay, all right. Um, yeah, if that's all your concern, we'll we'll leave some time for the the applicant and their. Linsker architect to answer about your your window and tree questions. Okay. So sorry, you you say you live at your address six four four.
Yes. The basic, okay, the the plan. I do understand that the front and the side less windows compared to the backside. So we are directly facing to the backside.
Okay, okay, I'll I'll have to have the applicant, the architect.
And the architect never mentioned about privacy issue for the.
So that's, okay, I'll 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 have the architect. Talk to answer your question. All right, thank you.
Vice Chair Mark, could I get his last name for the record?
Sure, sure, go ahead.
Sir, what is your last name for the record?
I S H I I.
And your first name, then?
F U M I H I K O.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to speak? All right. So I would like to turn this back to the applicant and the architect or landscape architect. Whoever want to address the the neighbor's concern. Here's your your your. Your chance to to talk to him. And I would also like to know. If this neighbor as all you have you any is that this neighbor ever raised the concern to you after you send him the notice? Yeah, you see, we want to speak on that as well.
I can I can address that. So yes, they were very kind to send us a detailed email and I believe. And they visit his gentleman's wife, he she visited us here on our property. And so we walked her through through the plans as well as the landscaping design. And I believe that's one of the reasons why Stephen Pam are on the call as well to applying the. Privacy related concerns both on the windows as well as on the landscaping plan. So I would love for them to.
Can can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, yes.
I'm Pam Jones with Aiken and Associates Landscape Architects. And to address some of the concerns on the back, we do have quite a bit of screening on the back and we've left some of the existing trees. Which were quite large there. There is one that was about twenty feet high right now. It's a type of privet and they. The red oak, there's a beautiful red oak tree back there. It's about thirty five feet high. And then we've supplemented with with some other. Pretty good size screening trees that will all get around, you know, fifteen feet tall. The pitts form will get, you know, closer to, you know, eighteen to twenty feet. But we've and we've also got a potocarpus back there directly in the back. So. I feel like we have a lot of screening trees right now, but if there's if there are a couple of. View windows that we want to, you know, double up on a screening, I'd be happy to address those, but I. Thought that we did a pretty thorough job along the back there.
We did a nice job and the windows that face that property are minimal. There are really only three windows. One in the bathroom, one in a closet. And one in the master bedroom, that's really not the main window. The main window in the master bedroom faces the front. So these are three somewhat minorish type windows. The other windows in the rear on that rear elevation face the point of the of the property, the pie shaped thing. It faces away from that property.
Okay. All right, thank you. So if we don't have anyone else to speak, we're gonna be close for. And then we're gonna talk, have a discussion among commissioners. Who who would like to go first? I'll this time that. Frank, you want to go first?
Sure, I mean, I I mentioned my thoughts a little earlier. I I like the project. I think it's a pretty clean design. It fits the corner of the lot actually quite well. And it looks like to be a very livable floor plan inside. So. I've looked through the Arborist report as well. I I I think it's a great project, so I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Sam?
Yeah, I also am in favor. I think it's a nice both inside and outside design. Sounds like the landscape architect is understanding the neighbor. To the rear and what would be appropriate for their screening. So I'm I'm glad that that's taken place and maybe there'll be one more conversation to assure them. That they will have their privacy. I'm in favor.
Okay, Jude?
Yeah, similar comments. I think this home is creative and it. Achieves many of the things we look for when it's the first home. In a single story neighborhood, primarily nine and eight foot plate heights. And actually, some of the plate heights in the master bedroom are less than eight feet. So. Kudos to the architect to make it work within the daylight plane and address some of those issues. The other issue, the other thing that's really making this house acceptable to me is the large tree in the front yard. Really diminishes the impact of the two story home. And it's, once again, it's a tremendous asset to the property. And I think at least from the street, it's going to really help integrate that home into the neighborhood. I am very happy to hear all the neighbors are on board on either side. My suggestion for the side window. Towards the neighbor on the left, I'm going to retract that because he specifically mentioned that, you know, that is of concern to him. So. And the and the neighbor to the rear, you know, I've looked at the landscape plan and. Once again, there is a significant amount of existing vegetation there and. The landscape architect has done a great job of infilling any gaps. So there the only window of major concern facing your yard is in the master bedroom. I think that is the largest window. And I think it's far enough back and couple that with the additional screening. I don't think there will be an issue affecting the neighbor on Arbolita. My only comment is the front entry hall. I I would like to see that pulled back. Because it to me, it's it's an outlier. It sticks way out. And I think if that's pulled back three or four feet, it'll improve. The not only the front elevation, but also the view out of bedroom number three, instead of looking into a sidewall. So I think the architect may want to consider high windows on either side. And pull it back a little bit to create a faucet over the front end. But that is a design issue that's not. Not in the not what we're talking about in terms of the design guidelines. So I will be fully support this project as designed. And if they want to make some tweaks, I'm okay with that as well.
Okay, thank you, Jude. Yeah, um, my comment is the same. I like the project, the the design, it's a. Respect the the neighbors. The one story neighborhood, you know, with a nine foot ground ground floor ceiling and the second floor. So the messing and the bulk is being kept to the minimum. And, you know, the the use of the material and the design, I think everything's very good. There's also, I understand there's the comments from the the rear neighbor about the privacy. And I look carefully, I was in the the rear yard myself. I understand right now it's actually, you know, it's about two or three trees and. The applicant and the bench architect actually is trying their best keeping those existing tree and they're gonna plan the. You know, more trees, you know, in along the back. So I I think the privacy impact is, you know, it's also minimum. But at the same time, I encourage, you know, the neighbor and the applicant to talk further. You know, so you guys can, you know, direct communicate to how it can improve further. So with with that in my, I I'm fully support of this project. So would anyone like to make a motion? Commissioner would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve SC twenty one dash zero zero four zero six ten Theresa Lane. For the conditions and findings. Submitted.
Name you second, anyone?
Frank will second.
All right. I'll call each commissioner. Start with the Jude. Yeah, I. Hey, Sam?
I.
Frank?
I.
And myself, I. So motion approved four two zero. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So let's move on to the next one. Commissioners report and comments. Anyone has any further discussion on some other items and comments?
I none here.
Not here.
None here.
Okay. Xiao, stop, Steve, John?
Yeah, so we will have future agenda items for the next meeting. I think currently we have three items. Will there be any commissioners who may not be able to attend the next meeting, which is February second, I believe?
You're here.
Yeah, I'm gonna be all here.
Okay, great. So we will send out invitation, which I think and we'll make sure to send that to you this week. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, if nothing else, so we're gonna adjourn the meeting. So right now it's nine twenty three and meeting adjourned. Thanks. Thank you.